Good evening and welcome to the August 12th meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine.
Here.
Friedman.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Sinan. Here. May we have the report, please?
The agenda for the August 12th, 2014 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, August 7, 2014, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay. Let's have the flag salute. Today's flag salute will be led by Councilmember Najarian.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. With the current situation in the Middle East, where suffering and death are commonplace events in the daily lives of the civilian populations in Syria, Iraq, and elsewhere, and the present imminent genocide against the Yazidi people, we are once again reminded of the fragility of life and the inhumanity that can overtake us, driving us towards violence. Amidst all of this tragedy, we lost a person who through dark times brought laughter into our homes. So as we mourn the passing of Hollywood legend Robin Williams as well, let us all, let us use all of these losses as an opportunity to pray and reflect upon the importance of our own lives and how we can make the world a better place for those who are still living in it. American philosopher, naturalist, and writer Henry David Thoreau wrote, quote, "On the death of a friend, we should consider that the fates through confidence have devolved on us the task of a double living, that we have henceforth to fulfill the promise of our friend's life also in our own to the world," end quote. Let us live our lives in a way to fulfill the promise of those who have died, the innocent in the Middle East, the mentally tortured but talented Robin Williams, and all those whose lives were cut all too short. We cannot bring them back, but we can prevent others from suffering similar fates by laughing, caring, loving, and sharing one another's pain. So we pray for the strength, guidance, and wisdom to be kinder and gentler to each other and work every day to leave this earth better than when we came into it. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. What's next?
Mr. Clerk, next is the agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, August 19, 2014.
Here's.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for August 19th, for the Glendale Housing Authority, we have one item under Business Agenda, Director of Community Development. This is regarding submission of the Section 8 Management Assessment Program. We do have a special meeting that afternoon of the City Council, and we have two items: General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Professional Services Agreement for Integrated Resource Planning and Proposed Grayson Repowering and New Interconnection Projects. And secondly, Director of Community Development, this is regarding the South Glendale Community Plan Environmental Impact Report and Citywide Transportation Model Update. That evening for the City Council meeting to commence at 6:00 PM, we have a number of consent items. Director of Public Works Facilities Management Building Maintenance Contracts. Director of Public Works Project Management Owner Representative Services for the Glendale Beeline Transit Operation and Maintenance Facility. Our CIO Integration Services for Backup Recovery Systems. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Request for Proposal to Load, Transport, Salvage, Recycle, and/or Dispose of Obsolete Electrical Equipment. And lastly, on consent, we have Director of Community Development. This is regarding proposed Nyodara Drive Historic District, and this is Authorization for Funding to Conduct a Historic Resources Survey. We have one item under Action, Director of Human Resources Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Glendale and the Police Officers Association. And lastly, we have two items under Hearings, Director of Community Development, 2014 Congestion Management Program Self-Certification Process. And Director of Public Works, this is an Appeal of the Transportation and Parking Commission Approval to Modify Existing Preferential Parking Restrictions on the 300 Block of West Lexington Drive Between Columbus Avenue and Central Avenue. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. What's next?
3B is Appointment of Arthur Charchin as a Member of the Design Review Board.
Okay. Arthur Charchin is in fact present here with us at the council meeting, but he is my nominee for Commissioner on Design Review Board. And just to read his short bio, Arthur is a longtime resident of Glendale. Well, he's a three-year resident of Glendale. His family has owned a business practice in Glendale for over 30 years, 40 years. His business, place of business is in Glendale. He's a graduate of UC Irvine with Bachelor of Arts and Bachelor of Sciences degrees. He's also, he also holds a JD from University of San Diego School of Law. He's currently an attorney specializing in real estate, business law, court law, and as we've been practicing in Glendale for the past eight years. I believe Arthur will be a great commissioner on this commission because in addition to his knowledge of design and real estate, he will also bring sort of a more of a scientific approach to things as an attorney, as someone who's able to analyze things, and someone who can learn really fast. So with that in mind, I nominate and I ask my colleagues to vote for Arthur if there's any questions. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, I'm sure Mr. Charchin is a great attorney. I've just had bad experiences for people on the Design Review Board that are not architects. I remember one attorney appointed years ago, attorney got up at the first meeting, went up and looked at an architect's drawing on the boards and wanted to know what the straight line was. Totally ignorant of it, and that person always was. I'm not saying that you, sir, would not be totally different, but my belief and policy is just me, I've always believed that Design Review Board should have architects on. You come in on another commission, you have my vote, but I just, my own conscience tells me, I just can't do that. I hope you understand what I'm saying, that I believe we need an architect on there because you're facing architects. The people that come up and talk to you as a designer review are architects, and that have common, commonality between them and you, I think is very important because you're talking about some significant problems and issues that come up on Design Review Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver, and I understand your concern. I will state that there, we have a number of commissions that on their face appear to require someone that would have the requisite expertise in that narrow field, but we have people serving on those commissions who do not have, at least professionally, the expertise in that narrow field and who do very well. And in the, in the past on Design Review Board, that has always been the case. I know that some commissioners sometimes don't work out. That happens. I'm willing to wager that Mr. Charchin will be one of those that will work out very well. So.
I pray he does, obviously.
Thank you.
There's no second required, is there?
No.
Is this, it's just an appointment? Correct. There's no second required, but there's a vote required.
Yeah, there's a vote required, so I'll call for, a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
No.
Mayor Sinan.
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Charchin, would you like to say a few words? Since you're here, you've made the trip.
I'd like to thank the council and Mr. Sinan as well for nominating me, Mayor Sinan, and for Mr. Weaver, I understand your concerns. I believe the code requires one architect to be on there. I'm not that one architect, but I will do my best to serve the city of Glendale. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
Next item.
3C is the reappointment of Sam Manukian as a member of the Civil Service Commission.
And Mr. Manukian is also my nominee. I'm actually renominating him. He's served at least one term on the Civil Service Commission, and Mr. Nijarian will correct me if that's, that's wrong. Okay. And he's a prominent businessman in the community. I believe he's served the Civil Service Commission very well. I'm happy to go through his resume again if there's a need for it, but I think he's a very well-known entity in the city of Glendale, so I'll just, unless someone has comments.
Yeah, hold on a minute.
Okay.
Same good.
Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sinan.
Yes. Congratulations to Mr. Manukian. What's next?
Next item on the agenda is the consent items. There was a card submitted for item 4D.
And I would like to pull items 4G and 4J for separate consideration, along with 4D, for which we have a card.
Which ones?
So D, G, as in George, and J, as in John. D as in David.
I'll move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Second.
Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver. Hi.
Mayor Sinan.
Yes. And we'll take 4D first.
Item D, 4D is Chief of Police Regarding County of Los Angeles Real Estate Prosecution Trust Fund and Award of Grant Funds. D1 is Resolution Authorizing the Glendale Police Department's Participation in the Program. D2 is Resolution Appropriating $120,000.
Chief.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, the item before you is to accept $123,000 again from the Los Angeles County Real Estate Fraud Prosecution Trust Fund. These are funds that are put aside during each financial transaction involving real estate, where the county collects $3 from those transactions and uses that money to fund education, prevention, and enforcement in investigation of real estate fraud throughout this county. The Glendale Police Department has been chosen as one of few agencies that has demonstrated the ability to investigate these complex cases and provide training as well as preventative educational components to our community and to those businesses that do business in our area related to real estate. This funding will allow us to fund benefits, training, and salary of a Glendale police detective to investigate these specialized crimes without having to use our general fund monies to fund that specialized training. So it allows us to have access to funding to work specifically on this type of crime in our community in the surrounding area.
Thank you, Chief. We do have a speaker. I'd like to invite Ira Bland to speak on the subject matter. Is three minutes enough, Mr. Bland?
Four minutes.
Great.
Thank you very much. Good evening, councilmembers, and everybody else in the audience. I'm a local Realtor. I've been practicing for about 12 years. I'm active in our local association, the Glendale Association. I'm also active in the California Association of Realtors. I just wanted to go on record and say this is a great thing. It's, it's an excellent opportunity. The money is always helpful. Fighting fraud is a major issue, and ever since I've been a member of the associations, I get people coming up always complaining about different things. So whatever we can do and however we can fight fraud is a good thing, so I'm just thrilled that it's on the agenda as a resolution, and I'm confident it'll be passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bland.
Mayor, move 5D, 1 and 2.
Well, I just, I just have a comment. I'm very happy that we are receiving these funds, and I think I related some of my experiences two to three years ago when I was trying to buy a house. And not just once, but several times along that road, I encountered what I felt was real estate fraud of one sort or another. So I hope that we aggressively get this detective up to speed and perhaps get a hotline going where phony short sales, forged documents, everything that, that is involved in the crime of real estate fraud can be investigated properly and brought to prosecution. I think we should stand up for this in Glendale as we stand up for other types of crime and have a very low tolerance for any other violent crime, financial crime. This is certainly another aspect of that, and I hope we have great success with the funds and our detective that's going to be on the beat.
And just to clarify, this is a continuation of a program that has been put in place for several years. So the investigator that's assigned to this will be, continue to be the same investigator, and they work hand in hand with the DA's office to investigate and prosecute these cases. So your desire is being carried out and will continue to be carried out even in a, in a better way by continuing the use of these funds and not having to use general fund money to try to budget this.
And I just want to echo your, your sentiments because I have, my private practice represented investors and homeowners who have been caught up in real estate fraud. It seems like indeed, at least in this area in Glendale, this is an important area that we need to tackle and allocate more resources towards because it is happening, and we're so fortunate that we don't have that much violent crime, so we can concentrate on this type of thing. So this is great, and I'm certainly going to support it. Yes, Ms. Devine?
I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm grateful that our police department is getting funds at this point. You deserve it. We should have as, as much support as we can get, and we appreciate that.
Okay. Can we have roll call? Oh, do we have a second?
Me a second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sinan.
Yes. The next item is 4G.
4G is Director of Economic Development Regarding Property Acquisition and Property Management Agent. G1 is Motion Authorizing Execution of Professional Services Agreement with Overland Pacific and Cutler Inc., in an amount not to exceed $150,000.
Do you want me to state what caught my attention? Okay. So in the, in our, in our notes, it indicates that there were three entities that responded to our RFP, and that all three of them were impressive. Then it goes on to sort of give a very vague and ambiguous explanation of why one was chosen over the other. By the way, I don't know any one of these three entities. I'm just, I just want to make sure that not only I, but the residents have a clearer understanding as to why this one entity is being chosen over the other. And I'll, I'll read the explanation. They were, I'm citing this, they were able to provide all the services requested in the RFP and more, and particularly, this is, this is regarding OPC. Staff was impressed with the qualification of all three firms. However, staff believes that OPC was best qualified to provide the services. They were able to provide, provide all the services requested in the RFP and more, and particularly stood out over the other firms because of their intimate knowledge of Glendale. I mean, that sounds so subjective and just so ambiguous. Can we be a little more specific?
Surely. OPC has worked with the redevelopment agency prior to its dissolution for some time, and has worked in this market, in the trade area, much more so, at least with us, with City of Glendale, Glendale Redevelopment, Glendale Successor Agency than the other two firms. So truly, their intimate knowledge is the knowledge of this market, of this organization, of this council, as opposed to the two other firms. The two other firms, by all accounts, are very allotable in their own types of credentials, but when it came down to what really is, at the end of the day, a subjective call based on objective criteria. So we look at all the different things, from cost to experience, other types of discerning factors, and got to a point where they were all so very close that the subjective side, the thing that made OPC stand out, was the fact that we had worked with them, that we knew them, and that we had tested the market to make sure that we were getting value for the dollar.
Okay. And in terms of you, one of the criteria that you mentioned was cost. There was no difference in the cost that was such where it would necessitate to?
Because this is in an amount not to exceed, we use them as needed, as any department may call the Department of Economic Development, for OPC services. We might not have a need for them in any given month or quarter or year, but if we do in the course of the year, in this, in this year, we would not exceed 150. So they all can meet that type of, as I said, the more objective standard in terms of cost. And credential. I mean, they're all very, three very good firms. OPC has worked with us. We know them, they know us. But in, in testing the market, as council has said, you know, if we're going to go out and bring in a consultant, make sure we look at who's out in the market, and we did.
And OPC, as you said, has worked with us on other redevelopment-related?
The dissolution of redevelopment has relied on, a good deal, on their expertise. In particular, the, the contracts that related to the compensation agreements for the Alex Theater, for some of our other assets that we will have to dispose of. We've worked with them on the disposition of the exchange properties there on Maryland. Again, have developed a good deal of confidence in their thoroughness in looking at what our costs are and actually trying to minimize what our liabilities are as well.
Okay. Any questions?
I'll move the item. Second.
Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sinan.
Yes. Next item is 4J.
4J is Director of Public Works Regarding Exchange Elevator Upgrade Project in Connection with the specification number 3531. J1 is Motion Awarding Bid to Liftec Elevator Services, Inc., in an amount of $780,517 plus 10% contingencies of $78,052. And J2 is a Resolution Appropriating $150,000 to Fund the Project.
I'm guessing the idea here is there is only one person that submitted a bid. Certainly, I can defer to Public Works Director, Mr. Galanian. We were a little surprised as well. This was a competitive bid that was put out, and because of the, the complex nature of the replacement of the elevators at the exchange, as well as the removal of some material from the property, we actually had a job walk and had a number of proponents come in and walk the job, understand thoroughly what the job was. Some of them, I think it was five of, of the proponents, some of them fell away because of the bonding requirements as an expense to do business with us because we want to be very secure and safe in terms of who starts the job and ultimately who does the work. And that I think the job really just sometimes you'll see doesn't quite, it falls through the cracks for some of these businesses. It's a large sum of money by our standards, not necessarily maybe by the industry standards, and so we lost a number of, we lost the interest of a number of those proponents as we moved through the due diligence process. To the extent that we did get a price of $780,517, and that was well within the original engineer's estimate of over a million dollars, I think that gave our public works department comfort in moving forward. But if you have any specifics, certainly you can ask Mr. Galanian.
I mean, let me just clarify. So a formal RFP was not done? Or it was?
We did a process, yes.
And they just, only one responded?
Only one responded.
Okay. I have no questions. Unless someone else has? Okay. We have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sinan.
Almost makes you want to go to elevator school. Yeah, and, and yes, the amount of, of the contract also caught my attention. So yes, that's my vote. Next.
Excess City Council and Staff Comments.
Ms. Devine?
Hi.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes. I was fortunate to attend with Councilmember Najarian and Mayor Sinan the 15th anniversary celebration of the Armenian Bone Mayor Registry. And in particular, congratulations to Dr. Frida Jordan. This endeavor has, in the 15 years, saved over 50,000 lives, and so it's an extraordinary effort by all, and I just want to congratulate them. On another note, I have two issues that I'd like to address. First of all, yesterday, I, with Mayor Sinan, I also attended a pedestrian safety luncheon held at Glendale at Venice Medical Center, which featured Chief Castro, the Glendale Fire Department, the Glendale Police Department, and ER Dr. Cardillo. It was very informative, but the best part was that there were 200, over 200 seniors there getting the message and the education about pedestrian safety, crossing streets and intersections, interpreting signs, et cetera. It was fantastic. But I, and I also understand that the Pedestrian and Cycling Safety Task Force will hold its last meeting on August 18. This will result in a report coming back to council with recommendations for future plans to make our city safer for pedestrians and cyclists. When this report comes back to council, I would like to request the following to be included for our consideration. Number one, a report from Chief Castro explaining the status and the results of current programs and the impact on the number of incidents involving pedestrians and cyclists since beginning this program. That would be the education and the enforcement. And also, number two, a recommendation from the chief, staff, and the task force in areas of engineering, increasing the number of well-lighted and well-marked crosswalks and any other structural changes they feel necessary. I would like staff to include the additions of the number of continental crosswalks in the city as they seem more visible to drivers and allow pedestrians a wider area to cross. And finally, I would like a report on the feasibility of additional four-way crossing intersections, the diagonal, such as the one on Harvard and Brand. This diagonal crosswalk seems very effective where high volumes of pedestrians and cyclists exist. I would suggest perhaps Brand at Broadview or Brand at Wilson, and looking to the north, possibly Honolulu and Ocean View. My objective, and I think the objective of all of us that are here, is safe streets and a safe city. And following that, in addition, I request that staff provide a report concerning congestion in downtown. With the mobility study coming to council in the fall for review and the Green Street proposal on our future agenda, I would like to see two items addressed as they seem to interface with each other. I, number one, I would like staff to include a study on the feasibility, the cost, the advantages and disadvantages of one-way streets running north and south to avoid the congestion on Brand and Central. I know this proposal has been suggested in the past, but I feel it's time to revisit. I would also like staff to provide a report on traffic signal synchronization on Glendale Avenue, on Central and Brand to mitigate congestion on those streets. I've been involved in long delays, just recently, coming from Glen Oaks on Brand, trying to get to Colorado, and there were four stop, four traffic signals between Col, Glen Oaks and Doran, and it took us 10 minutes to get through those because each one turned red. There was traffic backup, gridlock, people trying to maneuver from side to side, and I think if we look at synchronization of traffic signals, we might be able to mitigate that problem. So therefore, when the mobility study returns, I'd like to see these two items addressed, possibility of one-way streets and synchronization of traffic signals in our city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Devine, and I will, Mr. Weaver doesn't have anything to add. I'd like to also thank Glendale at Venice for their continued cooperation with the city of Glendale on many, many matters of civic importance, and specifically on the pedestrian safety and senior pedestrian safety issue. It was a great luncheon, very well-attended, and I'm thankful to Chief Castro and, I believe Chief Fish was there from the Fire Department. And hope that our cumulative efforts will bear fruit. And talking about cumulative efforts, just on Friday of, of last week, Glendale Sunrise Rotary had its kickoff of the Not Even For A Minute Campaign in front of the Alex Theater. And Not Even For A Minute Campaign specifically targets the issue of leaving children and pets unattended in, in vehicles for even a minute is a long period of time because temperatures rise really fast in an enclosed environment of, of an automobile and could have very bad consequences for everyone. But in the broader context, this is part of our traffic safety effort, and therefore Chief Castro was there, Chief Skoggins was there, and there was some media coverage also. Again, we're, we're going to continue doing our best to increase education and all those measures that Councilmember Devine was also requesting reports on. That'll be, again, contributing towards improving the traffic situation in Glendale. And finally, I am, I am excited to report that on Saturday, we had another set of boxing fights at the Civic Auditorium. I know some might chuckle and might say, well, you know, the gun show's gone, but now boxing, which is- which is a violent sport, is being held at the Civic Auditorium. But I will tell you honestly, it's a, it's a, it's a good sport. A lot of people were there. I, I think that's the best attendance that I've observed of all the fights that have been held at the Civic. And everyone, I mean, things were great, very well-organized. Our staff were there, our police was present, not in an oppressive way, but in a meaningful way. And it was a very self, very safe, safe event. A lot of people that were there to enjoy it. It was televised on Univision de Portes, if I'm not wrong. Yeah. So, good event, good PR for Glendale, and a really safe, safe event, safe venue to hold those fights. And that's all the comments. Yes, Mr. Weaver?
Just to concur. The four-way crosswalks, I thought I'd never see one in Glendale until we got one at Harvard and Brand, which worked. So, I totally concur in looking at the others. It doesn't, shouldn't take a lot of staff time to come up there. It's changing signal lights and doing some street markings to indicate four-way walks. So, that one should be able to come back in fairly short order. The intersections you mentioned are the most needed ones. You would think Colorado and Brand, but we don't have enough foot traffic down there, at least at this time. The others, the one-way streets that I fought on and off with staff on for the last fifteen years, continually being told, no, we can't do it, we can't do it. I've looked at the engineering of it, and I think we can. So, Mr. Galanian, I'd be glad to sit with you, and you can tell me if I'm wrong again on that. But I think it streamlines the traffic, putting cross, cross streets connecting one way to. They do it in Pasadena, it works, and I think we could do it in Glendale. Now, that study will take longer, do that. That's, I mean, start thinking about you're going to take out the median strip, you're going to change a lot of things. So, that'll take some months to get back to us and cost some money. He's shaking his head, yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yeah, well, it's the money issue that I'm concerned about. I know many of these, as I sat on the Transportation Parking Commission for eight years, we did extensive research into this and paid traffic consultants a lot of money. The results are out. Perhaps we can start with those results rather than, I don't want to necessarily authorize a several hundred thousand dollar traffic review on something that we may already have. So, maybe that might be a good starting point. And then, if council seems interested, if we want to go out and do another traffic study, then, then we could possibly do. I would support that step.
Much of everything that's being discussed is part of the report that you all have requested in terms of downtown density, DSP review, mobility study, and all of the various conclusions that Mr. Galanian's looking into. It, it's actually, it all comes together in very well-timed.
And when do we get that?
That should be at the end of September, I believe. We're coming back to you.
Yes, thank you. Next item?
Next item is Community Event Announcements. This is a three-minute portion.
And we have one speaking card from Leon Mayer. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Sananian, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer, and I'm here to give you a heads-up on our event for Thursday, this Thursday, seven o'clock at the library, Citizen Tenuei. Citizen Tenuei is a film by a local film producer, Robert Horsting, and he worked with eight Torrance High School students who set out to uncover the story of Ted Tenuei, a Japanese-American Torrance High School alumnus, World War II hero, and Medal of Honor recipient. And his Medal of Honor recipient did not come out until forty, fifty years later, because of certain amount of prejudice that was going on in our country during the war years. And this is a way for us to glimpse back at our history, to see what was happening and how things worked out in the end. In the end, Lou Zambarini, who we all know and heard of, dedicated the memorial for Ted Tenuei in Torrance High School. And that was the happy ending, in a sense, for a lot of people. And so, this, this is an event that I think you should see. It gives you a look back into some important history, and it showed how the Japanese-American in our, in our country, how they came out of the war, and showed how proud they were to be American citizens. And we get that all the time, and we're, from various ethnic people, we're getting the same loyalty, and this is an example of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next item?
Next item on the agenda is item eight, under Action Items. At eight A is Fire Chief and Chief of Police regarding funds from the United States Department of Homeland Security, 2013 Urban Area Security Initiatives Grant Program. Eight A, one, motion accepting the funds in an amount of seven hundred and three thousand dollars and authorizing to execute agreement with the City of Los Angeles. Two is a motion authorizing to execute agreement with SB Tactical LLC in an amount not to exceed eighty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of a CBRNE non-projectile firearms training system. Three is a resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing to execute a purchase agreement with 3M in an amount not to exceed one hundred and forty-five thousand for automated license recognition systems. Four is a resolution appropriating seven hundred and three thousand dollars.
Thank you. Chief Castro?
Mr. Mayor's Councilmembers, yes, I'll be representing the Fire Chief as well in this. It's a joint venture. The City of Glendale has once again been successful in being selected through a competitive grant process to receive these Homeland Security grant funds to allow us to continue our preparation and our training to be ready for disasters, emergencies, and terrorist events that may occur in the region. Because of the City of Glendale's proximity to Los Angeles, it is recognized that we have exposure to potential acts of violence that other cities may not have in the particular LA County region. This year, with the seven hundred and three thousand dollars, the Police Department and the Fire Department have requested that we expend the funds as follows. Four hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty will be going to the Police Department, using one hundred and forty-five thousand for additional automatic license plate readers, eighty-five thousands for a firearms training system, one hundred and ten thousand dollars for the purchase and replacement of personal protective equipment, that sets things as gas, mask, protective suits, and those things for officers, and one hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for additional radio equipment sustainment of our city's emergency radio system. The Fire Department will receive two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty, spending seventy-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-five on overtime for training in hazardous materials, urban search and rescue, and in terrorism liaison officer training. Hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars will be expended for the Fire Department to buy additional urban search and rescue training equipment that will be used at the Fire Department's Regional Training Center. And lastly, fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars will be used to buy additional replacement equipment of hazardous material and urban search and rescue equipment that's kept on our fire equipment and deployed out of the field on a daily basis. In order to accomplish this, there are two motions and two resolutions for your consideration in order to accept these funds and authorize their appropriation as recommended by staff. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Chief, I do have a couple of questions with respect to the eighty-five thousand dollar contract with CBRNE non-projectile firearms training system. Now, I'm assuming the reason they're getting that contract because there aren't that many entities producing non-projectile firearms training systems?
Yes, currently, what we use in the Police Department is we have a firearms training simulator that we use. It's much more cost-effective to use a simulator than it is to go actually out on the range. The simulator we have now actually shoots a projectile back at our officers, which sometimes results in automatic feedback, but also injuries. So, this is a system that's kind of unique. This uses, and someday we'd like to have you over to check this out. It uses vests that they wear and headgear that gives them, it, it kind of shocks them a little bit when there's, when they make a mistake, when they're in a situation and they present themselves in a way where they could actually be hit by a suspect in a gunfire situation. This new system will also allow us to practice with batons, pepper spray, and tasers, which we don't have the ability to simulate now in our training. So, this will provide a system that will overall enhance our ability to train our officers in a very cost-effective way and with immediate feedback in improving their ability to respond to emergencies in the field, and, you know, hopefully prevent some of the tragedies that we hear about across this nation, and sometimes are the direct result of cities and agencies cutting back on the critical role of training for both fire and police.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Any questions about that?
No. Just, again, grateful for the funding.
Funding, absolutely. And my next question is about the contract with?
3M.
The 3M, yes. And I just want, you know, it's, it's actually laid out quite well in the report, but I want you to talk about why they're, you know, why we're dispensing with?
Yes, and I have intimate knowledge of this, because I did take the lead for LA County Chiefs several years ago. When LA County decided to start deploying automatic license plate readers throughout the county, the Chiefs of Police came up with a strategy that we would research and find a platform that each agency would use in the county and that would allow for data sharing, so that we could share information across lines. So, for instance, if we input information on a license plate that we're looking for in Glendale, if that vehicle drives through Pasadena, Monrovia, Whittier, they'll have it in their data, their system that would alert them, and they could alert us or make a stop on that vehicle to apprehend the suspects or collect evidence for us. And so, this creates a unified system. I did an RFP several years ago for all the LA County Police Chiefs, and that resulted in the selection of the system we're asking to buy. We have thirty-two current automatic license plate readers out deployed in the City of Glendale. This will allow us to brought, provide another six, and will keep the platform the same. We're kind of into it. So, if we were to buy another system, they would not be compatible throughout the county, as well as what their own systems now would result in additional expense for us.
Makes perfect sense, yes.
Chief, if I can ask you a question on that, just in terms of how that works? If someone is on the street and our vehicle passes there, and it is, the license plate is read by the reader, is that information stored and kept on a database, so in case in some future time down the road, the owner of that vehicle is wanted, they can just click in and say, oh, yeah, that car typically parks on California and Doran?
The information is collected and is retained. What happens is, we only have an infinite amount of space, so it's retained for a certain period of time, and that depends on the number of scans that we may hit in a year or a monthly period before additional room has to be made. That becomes important, because I can tell you a case, we had a bank robbery, where we had four digits of a license plate. But we knew the vehicle had come into our community, committed armed robbery, and left. Through the use of that retrieval system, we were able to run those known digits and come up with a license plate that matched the vehicle and gave us eventually the owner of the vehicle and eventual apprehension of the suspect. Information, I'm very sensitive to the fact of collecting data by government and particularly law enforcement, is sensitive. That information can only be retrieved by a limited number of personnel on a need-to-know basis. I don't even have access to that information, to give you an example, how we keep it locked down, so that it cannot be misused or used in a way that would create any mistrust by our community members. It's specifically used for crime apprehension only, and it's used in specific cases by a limited number of personnel who have the authorization to access that information.
I mean, this should be scary to the criminals.
Yes.
But, but I have to tell you, for the average person, it gets a little bit, you mean, you know, the police, in case they want to type in my license plate, they know where I am, the hours that I'm there. It's good for fighting crime, I agree to that. I just hope we don't start to cross that line and get into our, infringe on our personal freedoms, but.
And that's a concern I have.
I haven't heard that.
Yes.
Problem with us. There are other techniques where there's video taken and photos taken, and I know we haven't crossed that. But I, I hope that you, as chief, is, that you remain sensitive to that, and it is easy, I would think, to sort of cross that line, wherever that line is. So, please, please keep in mind that, that it's a new technology, it's very powerful. This is something that Police Departments could never do before, not with a thousand officers. So, you know, we're trusting your good judgment and restraint in the enforcement of our laws and apprehension of criminals.
I understand your concerns, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, everybody's done, I'll move eight A, one, two, three, and four.
I'll second.
Can we have roll call, please? Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Anian?
Yes.
Next item?
Next item at eight B is Director of Community Services and Parks regarding fiscal year 2014-15 California Workforce Investment Board Funds to the Glendale YWCA. B one is a motion approving award of funds in an amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to assist female veterans with employment.
Mr. Duran?
Thank you, Mayor Sananian, members of the City Council. I'm happy to, happy to report that the Workforce Development Section of Community Services and Parks recently received a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the State Workforce Investment Board to create innovative solutions to help underserved populations with barriers to employment. There were a hundred and twenty-six applicants statewide that competed for the funds and eighteen won awards. One of those underserved populations identified by the state was female veterans. As a result, the Workforce Development Department or Section proposed assisting female veterans in the Verdugo region with their vocational training and employment needs, and was awarded the grant on that basis. Returning female veterans do comprise almost twelve percent of soldiers from the Middle East Wars, where one hundred and twenty female soldiers have actually been killed and six hundred have been wounded. Turns out, LA Ventura County has the highest concentration of female veterans in the state at thirty-six thousand. A recent survey by the California Research Bureau, female veterans identified assistance finding employment as their greatest need. Ironically, the same survey found that the area in which they had the least amount of information on assistance was in employment. Part of the reason for this disconnect is that many female veterans do not access services such as employment assistance at the same location as other veterans due to concerns over sexual harassment. For example, the State Employment Development Department's Glendale Office serves veterans, and they average sixty veterans per month that come in for services, but on average, only one female veteran per month will come in and access services here in Glendale. So, the goal of this project is to provide employment assistance in a safe and secure environment that is exclusive to female veterans. Therefore, the Workforce Development Section has teamed with an organization that works exclusively with female clients and that already works with female veterans, and that organization is the Glendale YWCA. The YWCA will hold two recruitment events for female veterans as part of this project to supply them with information from the Verdugo Job Center on Vocational Training and Employment Assistance. Ultimately, the goal of the Verdugo Job Centers is to provide at least fifteen female veterans with vocational training and place twenty veterans into jobs from a pool of at least twenty-five of female veterans. Program and the vocational training slots will be leveraged with other workforce funding sources. The project is planned to run between now and June 2015. In addition to the twenty-five thousand dollars allocated to the YWCA, the grant funding will be used by the Verdugo Job Center to pay for three-quarters of the salary and benefits of a caseworker, one, who will be assigned to provide specialized employment and training counseling, including referrals to training programs, job search and placement assistance, and supportive service referrals to female veterans. The YWCA, on, for their part, will design two-half-day, one-stop information intake and recruitment fairs or seminars, in addition to continuous outreach and supportive service collaboration with the Verdugo Job Center. We do have a representative from the YWCA, Michelle Roberts, the Executive Director, who is here and prepared to speak and expand on the information fair and the YWCA's plans for their collaboration with the Verdugo Job Center. And we also have Mr. Don Akamoto, the Workforce Development Administrator, to answer any more detailed questions you might have about the programs.
Before I invite the speaker up, Mr. Duran, how are we going to do the outreach? How is the YWCA going to do the outreach? How is the YWCA going to do the outreach in order to invite potential candidates for these training programs?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, we can go ahead and call...
Let's have Michelle Roberts. Roberts.
Okay.
Please hand it to the clerk.
Since 2012, the YWCA of Glendale launched an initiative, our focus on female veterans in addition to the other work that we've, are probably more known for doing with families experiencing domestic violence as well as some of our other camp and recreational programs. It came to our attention that there's a huge unmet need in our community, in all communities actually, for veteran services, but specifically with a focus on female veterans. There's a lot of information in your packet, so I won't go over all of that. I can answer questions at the end, that might be more efficient use of our time. But what our role is and what we have done to date is, we have actually participated since 2012 in the Glendale Veterans Coalition. We have staff that attend those monthly and play a key role. We've partnered with the Deputy Secretary of Women Veterans Affairs here in California, Lindsay Sin, to work on sponsoring two three-day transformational leadership conferences for female veterans, which we hosted in 2013 at the YWCA in Glendale. We had 25 participants at each one of those, so a total of 50 veterans went through those in 2013. We've also created and hosted two one-day female veteran empowerment fairs, and that's basically the model that we would use to do the outreach and recruitment for the subject of this proposal that's before the council. And we have an existing... Yes, it would be like a one-day fair. It's basically a half-day fair where we would host it at the YWCA of Glendale. We have speakers and materials, information. We have, provide free childcare onsite. We also have food and snacks and other things available to recruit the participants to come in. We've done this twice last year for broader, broader issues and an all-day event, and at each one of those, we had, we had 23 at the first one and 27 at the second one. So we've actually done this twice before in the last year and had 50 women attending those. We would basically use that model. Our existing network, in addition to being part of the Glendale Veterans Coalition, we work very closely with Pasadena City College, Glendale Community College, who both have veterans programs onsite. We are part of other veteran groups, organizations, both advocacy and service in the Los Angeles region. We've also taken up the issue of veterans, female veterans specifically, on a local, statewide and national level. We've made three trips to Washington DC in the last year and a half. One, we were invited to represent the YWCA of USA at the White House for an event honoring female veterans, as well as two trips to Capitol Hill to talk about and advocate for issues around veterans and the services that they desperately need. We've recently established a new partnership with the United States Department of Veterans Affairs Center for Women's Veterans through their director, Elisa Bassnight, and we have volunteered to be one of a pilot program of an online, a new online resource directory for veterans. So it would be actually probably one of a half a dozen or so locations nationwide that would be part of that pilot project. Our long-term goal is to create actually a female veterans resource center onsite at the YWCA of Glendale. We've made good progress these last two years that we've been involved with the foundational work that we've done. We've now actually put together a major funding proposal for a comprehensive system of care, including the resource center. We are talking with different funders, most of whom are private foundations and corporations, about getting that up and running and this opportunity to partner with the city of Glendale through the Verdugo Job Center on this project would be a great next step for us as part of our long-term goal and plan to serve veterans in our communities. We do think we're uniquely qualified to do this. We've successfully done it, like I said several times in the last couple of years. We have an existing network, we have partners, and we are well poised to do it. In your packets, you'll see draft flyers. I do stress their draft for the event. The first recruitment event would be, it's on the left-hand side, second document, for the first event that we would do. Our piece in this proposal is sort of the initial recruitment and engagement piece and it's short-term. It's the first few months of this project and once women are brought into the, the project, basically it's up to the Verdugo Job Center then to do the, the follow-up services with them and placement, although we plan to continue to work with them and support them in any way we can. So I'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a comment.
Go ahead.
I, I've been a part of the conferences that you've held. I know the commitment and the passion that you and Lisa have for these types of programs for vets and I know the impact that they make and there, it's huge. And so I was thrilled to see that you have this opportunity to provide these programs. I must say that when I was part of the Commission on the Status of Women, the state Santa Clara actually did, had gotten a grant for two years, I think, a couple of years ago, and they did huge fairs and they had hundreds of vets come. So I know that this is something that is necessary and I know that it will be a success. So I'm ready to move.
Second?
Okay, let's have roll call. Councilmembers, Devine?
Yes.
I'm sorry, and who was the second on that?
Me.
Mr. Weaver. Councilmembers, Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Sananian? Yes. Next item, please.
HCS City Manager regarding Legislative Update of State Bills. C1 is a motion to note and file the legislative update. C2 is a motion providing direction on Assembly Bill 612 pertaining to charter party carriers of passengers, permit requirements and drivers.
Yes, Mr. Archuleta?
Yes, sir. Last fall, the council had allowed us to bring on a, both a state and federal lobbyist and in doing so established a platform over which we would go and advocate or advise our lobbyists to advocate for or against certain pieces of legislation. As we draw to the end of the legislative session for this current quarter, we have this matrix that is in your staff report and at the same time, Mr. Najarian had received a second for discussion of AB 612, as was read into the record by city clerk. So if you have specific questions about the items that are listed on the matrix, certainly our legislative point person, Christine Powers, can answer those and/or if you'd like to have the discussion about AB 612, we can help facilitate that.
Does anyone have questions? No questions?
Well, I have a comment, I guess. Where is AB 612 currently?
It is currently in suspense in the Senate and it's likely to go to the Senate floor vote later this week, Councilmember Najarian.
Okay. I think it's important that we, and I haven't, I'm not sure if there are any amendments that are coming through on AB 612.
Actually, if I may, Councilmember, there, there might be, if, if it gets pulled from suspense later this week, there are some amendments that the author, Assemblymember Najarian would like to make. If you'd like me to go through those amendments, they're not included in your report because we just...
Yeah, you can just summarize them, just so we see.
Sure. In the current form that it's in, AB 612 does go further to require, has requirements that go further than to what taxi cab drivers are required to do for these carriers here. And the author wants to bring it back more in line with taxi cabs. This includes matching requirements for DOJ check. This includes California convictions and other reporting states, but not on the federal level, and a seven-year rule, meaning that background checks only go back seven years. The PUC already requires background checks on the companies, but it's a public database and not the state DOJ. And the individual convictions that are listed in the bill that are grounds for not employing someone as a driver don't change with these amendments and those are actually taken directly from the city of LA's taxi cab regulations.
Okay. So I think the important thing here is that we have a, an even playing field with the taxi cabs and the Uber, Lyft, Sidecar services. In the city of Glendale, we go to great lengths and the clerk's office goes to great length to monitor our taxi cabs, to issue permits. And we not only look at the driver's record, we have vehicle inspections. Are they annual or, or biannual, Mr. Clerk?
They are annual, Mr. Najarian, Councilmember Najarian, but I do have to say that, correct you then, say that for the last two years, they have no longer been in the city clerk's office. We consolidated those all under permit services.
Okay, when I was...
But we, but the city of Glendale does have very strict regulations as for the drivers as well as the vehicles.
Okay, so we have the drivers, the vehicles. In addition, the, I believe it was the council many years ago, required a $1 million liability policy to be carried by these vehicles. A, a car accident could easily cause a million dollars of damages to an individual, any sort of injury that requires a surgery or any disfigurement. Those that practice law on the dais and in the audience know that it is not an uncommon level of injuries from a vehicular accident. My concern is that the Uber vehicles do not carry that type of coverage and it is, I think it is imperative that we maintain that level playing field, that if we're going to require that of our vehicles, then we should support a bill which has the same requirements for the taxi cabs that it does for the Uber. The other issue is, we as a city dictate the rates that the taxi cabs can charge. Uber and these other services have different rates, varying rates, and they are not set by a municipality. That is not a level playing field. So I think we need to look into that. So no enterprise, because of its new use of a technology, get a leg up on an already entrenched and longstanding enterprise. So I think that's something we need to look at. I'm not sure if the bill addresses all those different issues, but as a, as a level of support, I think this council should very less, at very least, support an even playing field. And all those different areas of regulation that we insert ourselves as the city, anyone else wishing to pick up passengers, whether it's in the city or whether it's a statewide issue, should at least be held to those same level of criteria. It's only fair and I think that is what we owe it to our residents and to everyone who's interested in transportation.
If I may, just for a point of clarification, Councilmember, the AB 2293, which is under Bonnea, which is titled Transportation Network Companies, which is also in suspense, addresses insurance. The, the bill before you, 612, requires, it just goes into background checks and, from a safety perspective. And our understanding from our state lobbyists is there is a bigger process occurring in the PUC right now to create a checklist similar to that of taxi drivers that is all encompassing, that includes insurance and background checks. Not sure when we will get back to it.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of issues here involved in it and I think it's only fair. A lot of the, I don't use those services, but a lot of people that I know who do use them, their prime reason for using it is that it is oftentimes cheaper than the taxi cab services. And the taxi cab services are dictated by us, the city council, at the rates that, that they must, they must charge. So I see a little bit of a dichotomy. As long as things are all on the level playing field, I have no problem. Let the best service, let the most efficient dispatch, let the most clean and, and fresh-smelling vehicles be the ones that earn the customers. But I think we shouldn't tilt it against one type of standard and, let's call it, existing industry versus the newcomer.
If it pleases the council and because this item may or may not come out of suspense, what we can do, given all the uncertainties that surround the ancillary issues, is to pen a letter for the council that expresses your sense that first and foremost, what we're interested in is level playing field and send that to the author and so that they know at least that's the sense of the city of Glendale.
I think that's, that's the best we can ask at this point. You know, obviously, our letter of support, one way or the other, isn't going to buy votes in the state legislature, but I think it expresses our intent as a council that, as to what we are looking for.
And it's only fair to have a level playing field. We're not asking for anything extraordinary. We do have a speaker on this item and I'd like to invite Lisa Gritsner up for some comments.
Hi there, Mayor Sananian and councilmembers. My name is Lisa Gritsner and I'm from Sorrel Associates here in Los Angeles and I'm representing Uber. And I just wanted to echo some of the comments that Councilman Najarian made, which is that Uber supports the types of policy recommendations that you guys are making. In fact, they are already subjected to a 19-point safety inspection annually that is required before the driver ever goes out onto the road and required to be made every year after they go out onto the road. The drivers have an extensive background check that is required by the State Public Utilities Commission that actually goes beyond, as your legislative analyst pointed out, looking into state of California databases, but actually does a 50-state check to make sure that there are no criminal offenses, also looks at the sex offender registry and a number of other public safety and law enforcement-related databases to ensure that the drivers are, are safe. $1 million in liability is what Uber drivers carry. So to your point, Councilmen, exactly in line with what the city of Glendale requires of their taxi drivers. And to point out what your council also suggested is that AB 612 does not address insurance and it does not address rates. So our ask would be that the city of Glendale should certainly go on record with issues that it's concerned about, but that the bill, as it's currently written, AB 612, is actually very discriminatory and makes it very difficult for people to become gainfully employed. In the packets I provided to you, the National Employment Law Project actually points out that the lifetime ban on employment that is currently in the bill is very discriminatory. Most people only require a seven-year background check. I don't even think the city of Glendale has a lifetime ban on someone with forgery charge, for example, at age of 18, would not be eligible to become a driver at the age of 65. So the bill, as it's currently written, goes very far. It's good to hear that the, the author is considering some, some changes and we look forward actually as Uber to coming and meeting with the councilmembers here in the city of Glendale and providing a lot of information about how these TNC operators work. And actually, we have a number of drivers that are residents of the city of Glendale and so really would like the opportunity to meet with you each individually and inform you a little bit more about how the TNCs work and the kind of regulation that's happening at the state level on these companies. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
No questions?
Thank you. Before we take a vote on this, I do have a question about an Assembly Bill, AB 1147. I can ask, this bill would require massage professionals to pass a massage and bodywork competency assessment exam? Now, does this mean that the exam would be administered by the state or would this still be a self-regulated exam administered by the association? Because if, if it's being administered by the, the association, then it's perpetuating the same problem that exists right now.
Mayor Sananian, members of the council, I believe that the bill would return land use authority to cities and counties with regard to regulating the actual business, but the California Massage Therapy Council would continue to regulate the actual individuals that are certified.
So we have control over where?
Yeah, splitting the baby. They, they still get to certify their massage therapists, but we get to regulate it.
Which I would hope and expect would address the proliferation issue.
I hope so. I, I hope so. Because that proliferation hasn't been stymied yet, unfortunately. Okay, that's it.
I do have another question for Ms. Powers. So AB 1941, we, we are taking an opposed position on that?
Yes, but it, it died. It was pulled and the bill is dead, so it's not going anywhere. I think there was a lot of opposition to that bill, so it didn't go anywhere.
That was a terrible bill. But since it's dead, let's not, you know, let's not besmirch the character of the...
Stir the waters.
Cease. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Powers. That's it, do we have a motion? Is it moved?
Second.
Just so we're clear, C1 is to note and file, then C2 is, would not be a letter supporting or opposing, but just saying, state, a letter stating that the city... supporting or opposing, but just saying a letter stating that the city desires to keep an even playing field between taxi companies and these types of carriers.
That's my motion.
Correct.
Yes.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Sananian?
Yes. Next?
Next item on the agenda is oral communications. Discussion is limited time, is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council make question and response to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. City manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and we have one speaker today, Rolinda Biesmeyer.
She is.
Five minutes?
Mr. Mayor, hello, and I see councilmembers. Well, I'm the last, but I'm not talking about my Glendale youth orchestra tonight, okay? So I do have three questions I wanted to ask as a concerned Glendale resident, and I'm a semi-retired oncology nurse, just in case you ever wondered, what do I do other than come to these meetings? And so my first question was, where does the city stand in regards to the...replacing the tennis courts that you took out, you know, at the senior center on Luis and Colorado? And at first, you know, you were going to build them someplace else, you were going to do something with Glendale High School, nothing ever happened. And so then I'm wondering, with the drought and that we have to cut down on the watering that we use, why can't we use some of that land to make two tennis courts? Because, well, the park doesn't seem to be used that often. I play bridge and go to exercise classes at the senior center, and so I see that. And my second question was, thank you very much, Councilperson Devine, that I was going to talk about, that I was in attendance when Officer Castro presented the pedestrian safety campaign, and so, you know, at the time, they had flashlights that they gave out, and then they had these slap bands, and, you know, it's like, I don't think you had any with you that night to be able to show.
Careful.
So, you see, and they're in English and Armenian, okay? And so that...I was able to distribute about 300 of them to the senior center, just, you know, my civic duty, really. And so, but, you know, I hadn't heard anything more about it until you just mentioned it, and so I was really, you know, wondering about what was happening there. And I tried to get more bands, but they couldn't provide me with them because they said they cost 89 cents for the English ones and $1.09 for the Armenian ones. And so, you know, just wondered what happened with that. And so we'll see. And then my last question was, I've been going to the farmers' markets for over 30 years, all over, you know, Los Angeles, Burbank, Glendale, and that the farmer's market, once it was moved to Wilson and Maryland, it's not getting, you know, the use by the citizens. And is there any way we can advertise it more? Because some of the farmers...I talk to anybody and everybody, really. And so some of the farmers said, you know, for that four-hour time period that they were there, they made $80, and I know, you know, that's just not right. And so some people say they don't know where the new market is, and, you know, I used to go when it was on brand, and sure, you know, some of the business people didn't like it, but you had more foot traffic there, and so, you know, it's like, what are we going to do about this? How can we advertise more to make the residents more aware of this? Because, as a nurse, that, you know, I do promote healthy eating and, you know, live by example, and so exercise and diet are the most important things. So I think that's it. I was under three minutes, oh my God.
You did great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gritsner. And thank you for the very thoughtful questions.
Oh, okay, but, you know, I live here, and so it's a really nice area to be in, slap bands.
Thanks for caring.
Thank you.
I'm gonna follow...I'll follow up with our parks director. With the tennis courts at the ARC?
Yes, Mayor Sananian, city councilmembers, we are...we...replacement of the tennis courts from the old ARC are part of a joint-use project with the Glendale Unified School District. We are working with the school district on designs to rehabilitate the eight tennis courts at Glendale High School. The designs for the tennis courts have been completed. The school district is combining the tennis court rehabilitation project with the development and construction of their aquatic center, and so they have assumed project management responsibility over the joint-use tennis court project along with their aquatic center project. So we are close to finalizing a joint-use agreement with the school district, and so we will be replacing the tennis courts at Glendale High School.
Very good. Do we know when? We...
We should...a plan should be completed, and we should have final approval of all the plans and permits, including from the state of California, probably by spring of 2015.
That's great.
And hopefully start construction in late spring.
Very good. Thank you. That's great. I'm sure a lot of people will be very happy. And I assume we...do we have more wristbands coming?
Yes, we do. We've given out...you recall several months ago, I did an update to the council regarding our efforts in traffic safety in our new campaign, and we've given out almost 5,000 of those wristbands. And actually, cruise night, as you all were attendants, we had a booth that went up that our new Director of Communications and Community Outreach had set up, and that really cleaned us out of a lot of our material. So the new bands have been ordered, and we have additional items coming forward for that campaign to keep that message alive and well in this community. So we did have a few that we handed out at Glendale Venice, but Cruise Night was extremely successful in the booth that Tom Lorenz had set up. A lot of people took note of our campaign and took note of the different items we had to help improve visibility. So more are coming.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Chief Castro. And I think maybe worth revisiting the issue of the farmer's market. I do...I do agree. Every time I pass by, I look at the number of patrons, customers at the market, and it just doesn't look good.
The Downtown Glendale Association is responsible for the market now. They've taken it over, and ever since they've moved it off of brand, they have been struggling with it and trying to get the identity back. And so they do spend money on marketing. They're having to increase that amount of money they're spending on marketing, but they are...they are looking at how to remedy that situation, and they are putting resources to it. And I hope that in the next maybe 30 to 45 days, you'll see a renewed program of marketing from them.
Maybe something that marketing cannot remedy, maybe something that has to do with its location.
If they have to move, that's...we...it's a great point, sir. We had advised them that if they wanted to move it off of brand, that know that it was going to come with a cost, and understanding that this was as much as anything a pilot program, and if it didn't work there, then maybe it needs to go back to brand.
And when can we have some kind of an update on this?
We told them that we would give them a year's worth of working on it. They really wanted to take ownership with it, but I think they're dealing with it in a way that they just don't quite know how to make the best out of the situation. So the best solution might be the most obvious solution, which is take it back on the brand.
That may be the best solution. Thank you. Those are all the speaking cards we had, and we'll move on to the next item, which is...
You have new business?
We do have new business.
Mr. Mayor, if you could briefly recess the council meeting and go back to the successor agency meeting so that Mr. Weaver can read that motion.
Okay. Council...
Just recess.
Meeting is in recess now. We're re... We're now the successor agency. Yeah, now we're restarting the successor agency special meeting.
I like the move that the successor agency general counsel be and hereby is authorized to initiate legal action in the Sacramento Superior Court against the California State Department of Finance and other defendants to be identified pertaining to the implementation of the Disillusion Act and authorization of the repayment of city slash agency loans. The precise name of the action, all the defendants, and the full scope of the action shall be disclosed to any person upon inquiry once the action has commenced. The successor agency counsel is authorized to seek appropriate relief, including writ relief as authorized by the successor agency. The successor agency counsel is further authorized to incur any and all expenses necessary in connection with said matter.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Sananian?
Yes. Can I have a motion to adjourn the successor agency meeting?
On memories for Robin Williams and Lauren Bacall. Sam.
Okay, so we're adjourned for the successor agency. Can we have a motion for city council?
Same statements for them.
Second.
And we are adjourned in the memory of Lauren Bacall and...
Robin Williams.
Robin Williams, of course.